I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the regicide of Goldenale City Council on September 21st, 2020. We'll have the roll call if Connie.
Julie?
I'm here.
Lauren?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
Shannon?
Here.
Andy?
Here.
Filberto? Filberto? Guess he's not here. And Myland?
Here.
Thank you Connie. We need to have a motion to excuse Filberto Monteveros. Knowing his work at the 911 center is probably work related. Do we have a motion to excuse Filberto?
This is Mayor, this is Myland, I still move. And second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Filberto Montiveros from attending the city council on September 21st, 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
This is making pretty music.
We don't have a public hearing tonight. So we need a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda for this session. Do we have a motion?
Shannon, so move. This is the idea of Lauren, I'll second.
Whoop. I got Andy.
I have a couple corrections on the minutes.
Okay.
This is Lauren, so I had mentioned the comprehensive plan, so just a correction there that it's comprehensive plan, not comprehension plan. And also noted that it wanted to be part of any subcommittee meetings about that when the discussion about comprehensive plan residential construction laws come up.
You'll have to give that to me there, he only brought this.
Thank you Lauren.
Oh, there are records on there.
Mayor, this is Dylan, this is the care.
Okay.
Oh, Phil is here.
Yep.
Okay, sorry. On the agenda, we've had an amendment to the agenda, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Shannon, so make that mention. Or I'll second it.
Very good, it's said. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended and the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good, thank you.
Aye.
The next item is department reports and our police chief Jeff Hunsiker will is here and will give us a report. Jeff? Jeff, Jay, sorry.
Jesse.
Hi, everything's going good at the police department. Today we had our new blinds installed, so it's looking real good.
All good.
Now the outside public cannot see in at nighttime. So we're happy with it, they look really good and the installer was very pleasant to deal with. We did get the new civil service testing results. We had six apply, two showed up, only one passed, so we've got that. But other than that, things are going smoothly, we've had nothing major happen this week. And we're gonna have our first department meeting this week and I'll be swearing in all the officers under my name.
Very good, very good. Thank you Jay, very much. Noah Holm just had wanted us to remind people that the burn ban, both for the county and the state, is still in effect and to please use care with any date of that nature. The next item is council business. This has to do with the professional services agreement with precision approach engineering for the Goldenale Airport improvements and I'll ask Larry Bellamy to make the presentation.
Okay, the next two items actually go together quite nicely. We'll vote on the council business professional services contract first, but this is all made possible by the grant agreement from the Department of Commerce for the Goldenale Airport improvements. And as soon as we, of course, pass the council business for the professional services agreement, we'll adopt a resolution that authorizes the mayor to enter into the grant agreement for the same Goldenale Airport improvements. But the professional services agreement is with precision approach engineering, it's for the Goldenale Airport improvements. And this is task order number two with precision approach engineering for engineering design, bidding services and construction administration for an aircraft fueling system for the Goldenale Municipal Airport. The scope of services is quite extensive and it's listed in, and it has attached in the council packet. And we have used, we of course are staying with the same consulting engineer and that consulting engineer, precision approach engineering, was able to prepare all of the environmental and permitting services that allowed us to meet the threshold requirements to be under contract with the Department of Commerce. So that's a real important step because we were a little bit concerned about the 2000, or the current budget for the state, about whether or not they might use these funds to help balance the budget, but we're under contract now and I think we're in a much better place. But the consulting services agreement again is for engineering design services in the amount of $85,200 and bidding services with construction administration in the amount of $52,800. And we would recommend that the council authorize the mayor to execute this agreement.
Are there questions or comments in the council?
Yeah, Larry and Kevin, only one. I do come from an aviation background and yes, you know I also come from an environmental background. I am gonna say yes to this, but I would like to be part of the decision, part of the, as things progress, be part of the process, if that is possible?
It certainly is possible. We have an airport committee and then the other, that will be meeting as we get to say a 50% stage, so we can review the plans that are being prepared and have input before we go and finalize them to a 90% stage. The other, I was gonna say something else, but it completely slipped my mind. But anyway, we do have an airport committee that is very interested in this particular project and we will certainly include you in that.
Well, thank you, just sent me an email. Like I said, coming from aviation, coming from environmental, I would like to be involved in that.
Very good. Are there any other comments or questions?
Is there any urgency to approve this contract? Is there work they're gonna be starting on in the next two weeks? I have a couple of questions about it and I'd really, I'd like to see a more detailed budget that breaks down some of these tasks. I didn't see any schedule here, but I noticed that our schedule for the grant chose to complete it by June of next year, which is just kinda getting to the start of the construction season. And then last, I was kinda curious about the engineering work, looks like there's a lot of work that if we have an engineer on staff could do that. I was just kinda curious about where we're at with the position that Carl Inyard used to hold and, you know, whether or not we should be thinking about getting a part-time or full-time person in that sort of position so that we're keeping that money local and maybe paying a more competitive rate than consultant fees for some of this work? Yes?
The...
Alright, that was a lot, I guess we should start with any urgency on approving this contract?
Right. The urgency for, the urgency is really related to the ending date for the construction or the ending date for any application for funding reimbursement from the state. So you'll see that the determination of the ending date is scheduled for June of 2021 and we want to be sure to get, to meet that deadline. The one, the one thing that is of concern is the, well, one thing that we did in this contract was we split the construction, the civil construction engineering for like the electricity line and the communications line and then they also will be doing work to get the containment area and building the concrete slab and asphalt pavement to connect the existing taxiway with the fueling system. And then there's a second, a second contract that will go out to provide a turnkey fueling system. That has to be done separately and there's about, they understand there's about a 12-week lead time that's needed to order that equipment. So I guess the most critical piece, now there's two kind of critical pieces. One is the civil engineering, we hope to get done before the winter sets in. And then the fueling system, we want to get that lead time set up so that we can have the fueling system on site, say in the springtime of 2021 and then hopefully construction can be complete by June of 2021. So that's the, that's the urgency of the matter. We, we also are in communication with the Glicotech County Planning Department and there is a conditional use request that needs to be approved in that department and we've been waiting and waiting for them to figure out how to deal with COVID-19 and hold a public hearing all at the same time. And so there's a little bit of urgency to start to get that process complete so that we can actually be approved by the state or approved by the county.
So the main driver being that the grant expiration date, it's a really short grant window, it's 11 months and instead of estimated to be complete by June 30, 2021, but is there a firm deadline on that or is that something that can be amended in our contract agreement on the grant?
The June 21st deadline is a Department of Commerce deadline, so that's a deadline for reimbursement of any costs and expenses that we incur to make this project happen.
Right, so what do they mean by estimated? I guess, are they saying by then or sooner?
You can go beyond that date, but they have to, but the state, Department of, the state has to reauthorize continuing with these funds for this project. We are concerned a little bit about that reauthorization because it takes, you know, a vote and approval by the governor of the state to extend past that June 31, June 30, 2021 date. So that's, that's the reason that we would want to meet that date and do our best to do that because then there's no question about whether or not it has to be reauthorized or not.
Okay. Do you, do you have a budget that has more detail in it Larry? Are you seeing any more detail associated with these tasks?
No.
Other than what's provided here? No?
No, there is not. I mean, we talked about the scope of work and I'm sure he has numbers that he used to apply to each one of those tasks. It would be, I don't think it would be that difficult to get those numbers, but we just, we included the scope of work, but we didn't break down the budget for each task.
Alright, I'll let others add some questions there, so I'll relinquish the floor, so to speak.
Okay.
Larry, this is Phil.
Okay.
I don't know, maybe just catching him up. I know we've been working on this and you guys have been working on this even before I joined. I would make him, I would be ready to make a motion to approve. As far as Carl's position, you can fill him in on the discussions and the changes that council approved for that position and how that was divvied up. I don't think there should be anything that holds us moving forward from the airport when it's been in the worst for several years. And Carl's position was divvied up in several ways.
Okay. There is one other point I'd like to make with regard to that. The precision approach engineering is contract will include subcontract work for, especially for the civil engineering and design by our local, and he does surveying as well, but our local engineering firm is slated to get some work off of this project. A lot of the project is, is specific and to airports, to airports generally. And so that's a specialized field and that's why we need to, that's why it's a good idea to hire a person and a company and a consulting, a consultant to perform these tasks. But like I say, the local engineering company will be able to get, take advantage of this work to a degree that they have expertise.
He's absolutely sure.
This is Kevin Pio, I was not the one who said that.
What did Kevin say? Kevin, could you repeat?
So here's my question. How big are these fuel tanks gonna be? Do we know? Are they expandable over 50, 60 years if we ever put another half mile, mile on there and go to big jets? I know very little about this and I apologize.
Well, the, the short answer to that is we had a certain, we had a finite amount of money that was given to the city, which is the grant agreement that we're gonna vote on next. And that was for $539,000. And as we did the estimate, we've done the estimates and we've met with the airport committee over the last nine months and we came up with a plan to have jet, jet aid, no, ab gas, a tank that had ab gas, which serves about 90 to 95% of the planes that utilize that airport. We talked about being able to have a place for that tank and for future construction, a place for a second tank that could be used for jet aid fuel, which would be for the larger engines and the DNR helicopters, for instance. That kind of fuel would be needed by them. But we didn't have enough money in the, in the budget to, to put both tanks in, so we chose the one that will meet about 90% of our needs.
Okay, and this one's not coming from a scientific point, it's just out of curiosity, is this above ground or below ground tanks?
It's an above ground tank.
Okay, so they're smaller tanks, okay, gotcha.
There's a containment area that will be built to handle the fuel spill if there is one.
No, 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 for environmental reasons, above ground is better than below ground because if they leak, you don't know they leak, so I'm good with that.
Any other comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion?
I'm moved to authorize the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with PAE for engineering design bidding services and construction administration for Goldenale Airport improvements in an amount not to exceed $138,000.
This is Phil, I thought that was Phil.
Was that Phil?
Filberto, yeah. Yes. It's been moved and seconded to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with PAE for engineering decision designed by bidding services and construction administration for Goldenale Airport improvements in the amount not to exceed $138,000. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Did you get that?
How many was that?
I think it was four at least.
I think we have four.
Yeah, I guess I'd be opposed just without a breakdown of the cost and a schedule, especially with the timeline. And I think the cost breakdown for a task is really helps that manage the contract, especially if there's any changeovers over time. So, you know, if we wanted to adjust that motion, make a friendly amendment, that it's passed if once Larry receives a cost breakdown by task and at least a draft schedule, I think those are some two really important things to have in this process. With that said, you have the votes to pass it, so I can just record it as an end and we can move on if you'd like.
That's fine. Do we have any opposed?
We're just opposed.
Just Lauren, I think.
I'm opposed as the motion stands, yes.
And we can add the amendment?
Well, he said, he said, "Don't worry about it," he just said. He would like to have that information.
Very good, we can add that.
And I will, I will provide that information.
Very good. So that motion passes?
Yes. Who's banging around out there? I said, who's banging around there?
Mayor, this is Andy. I'd like to remind everyone to use their phones, there's a lot of background noise going on right now.
Thank you, Andy.
We're ready to move on to the grant agreement.
Okay, we're gonna go on to the next item. This has to do with resolutions and it's the authorization of a grant agreement with Department of Commerce for Goldenale Airport improvements. It's a crucial step to getting everything moving.
Okay, the first question I'll ask is, do we have a resolution number Connie?
There's not one on there?
Good. That's alright.
I'll get a number.
Okay, wait, wait for a minute, we'll get a number.
Oh, it says H1, yeah. Connie, get in it, okay.
Sorry.
Lot of dead space there, so we apologize.
I, I should have brought my kazoo.
You could have entertained us while we were waiting.
I could have entertained you guys, but...
I didn't think it would take that long.
712.
Okay, the resolution number is 712, that's 712. And I don't think I need to explain it any further, it is a grant agreement from the state's capital budget program, it's administered through the Department of Commerce and it's for Goldenale Airport improvements and it's in the amount of $539,000.
Do we have questions or discussion before we have a motion? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Mayor, this is Myland, I still move. This is Lauren, I'll second.
Thank you both. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce, contract number 20-96627-089 for improvements to the Goldenale Airport in the amount of $539,000. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, do we have any opposed? If not, the motion passes with the four votes given.
Well, I think we just need to clarify that all seven of them voted.
Oh, they did, okay, I didn't hear all seven. But that's good, that, this is a grant and this money that will come to the city from the state capital improvements budget. It's quite a strong contribution to our having an airport that is safe and functioning. Then the motion to authorize the mayor to enter into this agreement is passed unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll move on to a report of officers and city administrator. We'll begin with Larry Bellamy.
The only thing I wanted to mention was that we're still working with the auditor on the two-year audit for 2018 and 19. It's taken a little bit longer than usual because it's a little more difficult to manage it with the, not being able to be person to person. But we're working our way through it and getting things accomplished and we'll let you know when there's a, an exit meeting scheduled sometime probably in, in October. That's all I have.
Thank you Larry. Okay, we'll hear from the council now and we'll begin with Myland Walling.
Thank you Mayor, push the button. But anyway, yes, I'd like to call man, I appreciate that letter that was sent to the council on homeless cats in town. I don't have the answer for that, but perhaps someone could maybe call in or whatever and perhaps we could deal with that some. I know we have a problem with the deer and raccoons and skunks and opossums, but anyway, perhaps we could still kinda, kinda look into that. The other comment I wanna make is last week, the Goldenale Chamber sent a check-in to the reader board company and we hope to get the new reader board signed within the next the next eight or 10 days. So been working on this months and months, and so I, I hope we, we should get it another, another week or so, then after that, we'll have the PUD install it for us. Anyway, I think that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mylon. Filberto?
Good evening, everybody. Just a couple of things. Larry, you know, you've been very busy with the audit, I totally forgot about that. I sent you an email and a couple of questions that have been brought up to me, so if you can check that out.
Well, I have the answer. I've got an answer.
And also, again, it created more work for other people. But, and with the fire season still going, and I know everybody's been hearing the news on all the fires around, and we dealt with the heavy smoke, and having responded on a couple of fires into the Yakima and Triggo area over the last month. I think we need to revisit our city ordinance for fire bans and illegal fireworks. I know a couple of weeks ago, we had fireworks on East Port, I think, and that's happened several times. There's been a couple of fires, people having tire fits for whatever reason it is. It's no excuse. I mean, I'm new to the Pacific Northwest and never dealt with burn fans before in my life, but I totally understand now why we need them. And I think our ordinance needs pretty significant teeth so that people know that if you violate the law, you will be arrested. I would prefer arrest over silent releases or summons to court, you know? Our neighbors in Oregon have been evacuating towns, we clean towns, and people by the thousands. People have lost their homes. And it's only a matter of when that happens to Goldendale, not if it happens. And I think in order to help us all, that ordinance needs to be revised, and then they have definite teeth into it and definite arrest consequences.
Filberto, with regard to the two items on which you meant, you sent me an email. I do have some answers to those two questions. And the first one was related to student liaison on the council, and we've done that once before. And we did it utilizing a conversation with the principal at the high school to see what kids were eligible and just to kind of gauge whether or not there was interest in that, and if so, who he would recommend. And so there was no, there really wasn't a vote. It was really more based on a recommendation of the high school principal about that position as a student liaison to the council.
Okay. I know they have, I don't know if it's new, or maybe I wasn't aware. I know they have leadership class along with a couple other classes that deal with business. I think that might be a perfect experience for some of the students.
Okay. Well...
So I'll hit the principal up and one of the advisors and see if we can move forward with, with our recommendations, and then we can do something about it.
Okay. And then the other...
The other one, you can just email me back.
Okay. I will do that.
But the biggest one would be, you know, revising that tax statute. And, I mean, we've lucked out this summer so far, and it's not verified. Some people's choices are, are less than smart. Keep it fluid if you're hurt.
Okay.
That's a nice way to say it, Phil. Thank you. Next, Councilman Andy Hall. Bear, approve him?
Mayor, this is Andy. I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Shannon Milton.
Nothing tonight.
All right. Kevin Feok.
Yeah, I know I clogged a lot of lines, and I do apologize. One, I'd like to thank all the firefighters. This has been another rough year for us in the Pacific Northwest. But the second thing is, the census is going to be starting doing the homeless population here in our county. White Salmon and Yakima have both, or in the district. White Salmon and Yakima have been targeted, but they really don't know where to go here in Goldendale. They have, the Spokane district messed it up. They waited until last minute, and I haven't heard anything about it other than from the Census Bureau of where to go. I have identified two possible areas just by talking to locals, our friends and our neighbors, about a possible homeless camp behind the pool at the creek, and another one under Singing Bridge. So I was wondering to add to this, is there any other places that the Census Bureau can go count homeless people, which will add to our public money, that anybody else knows about? I'm going to take that as a no.
Nobody's shaking their head. Yes, everybody is kind of likes Spokane tonight.
Yeah.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. Lauren?
I was curious to know what the status is on the construction for West Byers that's scheduled for completion this year.
Okay. The West, the West Byers project was not approved last year for the transportation improvement funding, but it was, we reapplied again, again this year in July, I think, or July or August, and we will have results of that application process by November, mid-November. And then we'll determine what's next. And that process will be, will look like something like this. If approved by the Transportation Improvement Board, then we can start on the waterline project first that needs to be replaced over there. And then we have to look at storm grain. Well, that would have to be constructed with our own funds, and then the street and storm drainage work would be done with the Transportation Improvement Board monies. So that's, that's where that one is. We're still waiting on a grant to be approved for that particular project.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Larry.
You bet.
And then, you know, it's definitely been a tough fire year. You know, if we start looking at changing our ordinances, love to be a part of that conversation. I'd be fairly reluctant to move straight to arrest, but I'm not really familiar with the ordinance, so maybe some higher, higher fines or reinforcements needed. I just think that arrest would be pretty, a pretty dramatic first step and hard to enforce as well. So maybe something we can schedule for more conversation in the future.
Lauren, I agree. It's not only difficult, but it's also going to be very costly to imprison people overnight or for a day or two, depending on if it's a weekend. It might cost us more money than it would be worth or worthy.
Yeah, definitely an issue that needs, needs maybe some attention, and we can all discuss on that and maybe figure a path forward out if there's change needed. All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Lauren. I'm Julie Buck.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a kind of meeting this evening.
Okay. Thanks, everyone, for your comments on the mayor's side. I think part of the difficulty of working our way through the airport work tonight, and the ordinance is on fire, and I'm cleaning our city, all of these items have kind of been set aside because of COVID, and it was because we couldn't have a meeting of more than five people. Well, we're still in that spot, and I don't know that that's going to end for months. So we're going to start doing committee meetings by Zoom. You'll be notified in advance. Make sure your time and everyone else's will fit for these different committees, and that way we will be able to proceed with the airport committee, the ordinance committee, any other pending work that we need to be doing. So we're going to ask for comments, written comments, to either myself or to Larry of what you see that we need to act on quickly. One of the priority areas is stronger ordinances to keep our city in better appearance. You've asked for it, and we've, we've worked on this for a long time, but we need to toughen those ordinances to where we don't have the issues we have right now with cleanliness or an orderliness in some of our neighborhoods. So it's something that we'll be able to strengthen if the council decides and if the committee decides. So be expecting to have a few evenings with Zoom. I think we can do it with an easel or a PowerPoint thing so you can get the information. We can have our discussion, and then the committee will be able to make a good recommendation to the council, and we can move forward. I think it's...
Thank you, Mayor Cannon and Larry, for moving in that direction. No one would have expected this to go on as long as it has, and I just appreciate both your efforts to keep these meetings going, as challenging it is, and to take on the burden of continuing with the subcommittee meetings as well.
Well, that's good. Thank you, Lauren. The discussions are really the value in these committees, and then the recommendation to the whole council likewise. So we'll be working on that, and we'll also be working on committee assignments to make sure everybody has what they're hoping to be a part of. We're limited to three city council members per committee, and I think we've got the list. We'll send it out to you so you know where you are or where somebody else is, or if somebody's not on yet, like Kevin Feok for one, and what he might have interest in. It's not required that you participate in a committee, but it is a very big help to the council. The next item on the agenda is a public comment. If there's anyone on the line, we publish the number to call and the ID number to give for your Zoom meeting. If you have a public comment, please speak up so we know that you're on the line. And make sure you...
Mayor, this is Roger Nichols, and I have a question. If you're going to go to Zoom meetings for committees, why not go to Zoom meetings for the council meetings?
We are on Zoom.
That's what we have now, as I understand it.
I think, Roger, you were, you were assuming by some of, this is Larry Bellamy. I think, Roger, you were assuming by some of your, by your comment that you thought the mayor was talking about a video conference via Zoom. That's because he had mentioned something about having charts and things like that.
Right. During desktop.
Yeah. At the moment, we don't have that capability to do it by video. It's not a bad idea. We might want to like, look into it. We've all been hoping, as Lauren indicated, that this would end, and we would be able to get back to person, in-person meetings. But I think that the mayor was assuming that it would still be done via teleconferencing.
Well, I will say that one thing that will help, because if you have a Zoom meeting, you can mute all these people that are making noise in the background. That would be very helpful.
That's true.
I knew that, but then I couldn't hear. I'd have to know who they are to mute them so that the council could still talk.
When you have a Zoom meeting, I do it for city council of the Downs, also Prowosco County, and others that are meeting by Zoom. You have a list of all the people that are online.
I just have phone numbers.
I know. That's why you can't do it, but the full Zoom will have all that.
Well...
Sorry to interrupt.
That's all right.
It would be very helpful.
It's very helpful.
No, I think that's good, Roger, and you have Zoom or GoToMeeting or any of those apps. Even if we don't want to go with that camera setup due to communication restrictions, the number of, you know, data that someone may be able to manage, you can still use those apps to share your screen so we could run through a PowerPoint or something like that, which might be very useful without having to do, you know, video conference with everybody sort of thing, but at least be able to share information or have the agenda, that sort of. So that's, that's probably worth looking into.
You're assuming I'm smart enough to do that.
Thank you.
We'll get somebody younger than you.
The IT people.
Thank you very much for your comment, too. It's a very, very helpful step. Do we have anybody else on the line for public comment? I don't believe we do. If, if you want to be on, please unmute your telephone. But otherwise, if not, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Speak up right now. We'll go on now to item, the last item of the meeting is a motion to adjourn city council.
So moved.
This is Andy. I will second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn city council for September 20th, 21st, 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The meeting is finished. Thank you.